All right, well, welcome. This is our planning board meeting. It's also, our agenda is to specifically focus on Articles 1 and 2, the zoning articles for the special town meeting. Special town meeting is Wednesday, December 6, 7:00 PM, and it's at Pineville School. So, tonight, we're just going to have a question and answer session and try to address any questions we have about Articles 1 and 2. Article 1 is to see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, and I'll describe that, Marion will describe that. And then Article 2 is to rezone the property of 104 Coolidge and approve a preliminary development plan at specific site. So Marion, do you want to just describe Article 1? Or is there a lot of other questions?
Sure, we'll start with that. Did everyone pick up one of those little green back sheets at the door? If you didn't, you probably want to go get one. One side of that sheet describes Article 1. Article 1 is an article to change some of the detailed requirements of EA zoning in the town. EA zoning, of course, was elderly affordable zoning. And it really is designed to provide an alternative to large single-family homes. It allows denser developments, multi-unit developments, along with a designated amount of conserved open space, that would be 25%. It has a lot of requirements, such as a certain number of units per acreage that you can do, et cetera, et cetera. The idea is to provide an alternative to downsizing seniors, young people coming into town, a way to live here. Another purpose of the bylaw, though, is to provide an alternative to the 40B state housing process, the affordable housing process run by the state over which the town has very, very little control. It does not, 40B housing does not go through local town committees and boards, as you know. It's approved by the zoning board of appeals, and there's relatively little that the zoning board of the town can do to change a 40B application. So another purpose of this bylaw is to provide an alternative to a developer, to do it this way with the town, rather than what it is. So, there are three proposed changes here. I should first say, and you probably, people in this audience probably already know this, but I'll say it just for the audience at home that is probably not hearing this now, that the EA zoning is property-specific. It applies to specific properties in town, selected properties, selected by us, the town. And it applies to a specific development plan on that property. So, to change a property to EA zoning, you have to, with that, accept a particular preliminary development plan. Once approved, if approved, by a two-thirds voted town meeting, the zoning and the plan are locked in place, and the plan can't be changed significantly. Small changes can be made, but the zoning is specific to the plan. So, that you should know. The planning board has been talking about some changes that are needed in the bylaw for some time. And we're bringing it to town meeting now because it's relevant to the proposal for an EA development that you'll see in Article 2. But even without that EA development, these are changes that we think are worth making. First of all, the permitted locations. As it stands, the bylaw says EA project can only be placed within one mile of town center. It turns out that that's not consistent with our housing production plan, that it envisions denser housing closer to public transportation and shopping. And another downside of that rule is that a 40B proposal on the periphery of town can't be negotiated to an EA instead because we can't put EA's anywhere in town. So, basically, we want to eliminate that limitation. There's no zoning limitation. And then for types of EA projects, the current bylaw says that they can be affordable, 25% affordable, just the state, but not under town rules, or age-restricted, over 55. But there's no category named in the bylaw for affordable and age-restricted. And that's a category that is needed in the town. So we're adding a third category, affordable age-restricted, which is over 55, and requires 10% affordable housing. The 10% is because, first of all, it may be more attractive to a developer, and 10% will bring 40B. But also because if these projects are built, it doesn't set us back in terms of our goal to reach 10% affordable housing. It's basically affordable percentage neutral for the town. The third change is regarding...
Are you asking questions yet, Cora?
Maybe, let me just finish, and then let's come back. There's only three things, and I'm on the last one. Regarding utilities, denser, larger housing projects than EA projects may be are actually safer for the environment of the town if they install a wastewater treatment plant, rather than big septic systems. Because the state monitor, but the state regulates how wastewater treatment plants are built, and the state continually monitors them over time. And the state has very strict standards for effluent from those systems. That is, a wastewater treatment plant is a good thing to have. But we want to make it more flexible to encourage developers to put in wastewater treatment plants. So rather than saying, as the law now says, that adequate methods have to be provided on the site, we propose that EA projects may have, if it's public wastewater and public water, it may be located off-site, as long as it's permitted on the property off-site, such as adjacent property owned by the builder, or obviously, you can't just put them anywhere. So, we think that will be a safer option for the town. So, many things are not changed. There are five pages of regulations that govern EA in your warrant for town meeting, and most things are not changed. Only history.
So, I want to take your questions. I should, I think it's obvious, but this is recorded, and it's a planning board meeting. So, when you speak, please identify your name and address, and then ask away, please.
My name is Helen Spelman, I'm at 147 Hudson Valley. I just wondered, the 10% and EA, does the 10%, can that be families and anybody low income? Or is that also covered by the 55 and over?
It's also, it's within the 55 and over, not the 10%.
Okay, so, within the 10%?
Right.
Okay, good.
When it's affordable income based upon the 40B regulations, which is not necessarily low income, it's middle-class income in a very expensive real estate environment.
Thank you for mentioning that, that's important. It's not, to qualify for such a unit, you need to have 80% or less of the median income for the region. Is that correct, my friends on the planning board? So, you don't have to be destitute, but you don't, you would not be a high-income person.
Next question. Can you remind everybody that done a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jean Bedamire, Bedamire. So, on Article 2, EA option, but there's also, if that happens, the next thing that has going to happen, there's going to be a very large 40B apartment complex. So, it seems like putting the EA, expanding it outside of center of town hasn't accomplished the goal of restricting the developer's need for 40Bs. Because I've read about it, the 40B seems to provide the developer the financially attractive way to build house, you know, to build developments. And so, it seems to me that the state and this development still controls the water, the wastewater, the environment. So we haven't, also met the goal of retaining town control over this project.
Right. Well, the 104 Coolidge, that was originally proposed as a 40B development, right, is now being proposed as an EA development. So our rules for EA do take it out of state control. Only the wastewater treatment plant, once it goes, once it gets built, will be under state control. The project itself, an EA project, is not under state control. That's under our local bylaws and regulations.
Okay, I guess at another meeting I went with the Board of Health, they felt like they had no control because of the 40B apartment that is, you know, added onto this project. It's not in the article warrant, but it is a fact that they couldn't do anything but write a letter to the DEP, and that's all they could do for the citizens as far as... We're downstream of all this development, and we're very uneasy about contamination of our wells to ours.
Sure. Part of you, it's a great question, so we want to, let's spend some time on it. And Mike, maybe it's useful to go ahead and talk about Article 2, so he can, so your example. You've got a question about Article 1, but it obviously relates to Article 2.
Yeah, rest one.
Yeah.
It just says, so I just want to address the concern that, and how the Board of Health might have been approaching the conversation, and that is that this project, whether it's 40B, or it's EA, or whatever happens, yes, the control of Board of Health is limited because it's a waste treatment plant. So it's not a, because it's a waste treatment system that is monitored by DEP, so it's a waste treatment system. It's not a conventional septic. Title 5 regulates all conventional septic systems and alternative septic. But in our town and throughout the Commonwealth, Title 5 regulates septic. Waste treatment plants are a separate entity that our local Board of Health, regardless of how it's developed, anytime the waste treatment plant is installed, they don't, they're not the permitting board for a waste treatment plant. So, our Dover, Sherwin, Middle School, High School, they have a waste treatment plant. The Board of Health in Dover didn't have any say over that process. It's a state permitting process. It's environmentally, long-term, it's, I prefer it because if there's, if there is, because it's monitored, because it's not like a conventional system that we have in our town where someone puts it in, and you have no idea until it fails, and someone has, you know, water to test. It's conventional system, we're not testing our conventional systems unless we have to sell our house, where you just have to, you're going to self-monitor. So, but waste treatment, environmentally, it's constantly monitored. The state has standards, the effluent is drinking water standard. So, that's where, yes, the Board of Health does not get to have a whole lot of say locally on that, except that it's, environmentally, it's a better system. And that will be the system, whether it's EA or 40B. So yes, it does get confusing, but that system, it's more expensive to put in, it does, I don't know, it definitely, but it can support two projects.
But adding on that testing, are you testing just the system or the adjacent wells?
I, that's, you know the M and adjacent? Well, they know there's, the effluent gets tested, but...
Mike Lee, 20th Wildwood, as member of Regional School Committee, I can attest, the state rigorously monitors these systems. If you get out of compliance, they come down and do a ton of bricks. That's why, five years ago, you may remember, we had to rebuild the waste treatment facility at the region, and vote Dover and Sherwin had to put in capital funds for it. And we were monitored on a monthly basis until we got into compliance, and we're still on a periodic monitoring process, like all other systems. And we hire a professional firm that handles all of that, and it's, you know, it's getting very rigorously watched by the DEP. They do not mess around if you're out of compliance, trust me.
Marion, and then...
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate your question. I realize the way I presented it was a little confusing. I talked all about local control of an EA development, and then talked about state control of the waste treatment plant. But to back up, the overall control of the project is under local control. We can decide whether or not to approve the project with the waste treatment plant. That's the distinction.
But not connected to, once you put the 40B, you can no longer do that, is that correct? Is that how the two things work together in this case?
Sorry, Jean, can you ask that again?
Yeah. I understood you to, I'm sorry, my voice doesn't carry very well. I understood you to say that without the waste treatment, it would be, everything but the waste treatment, or without the waste treatment, it's under local control. But because this 40B, a part, large, very large apartment building is going to be 40B as part of this, I mean, we have to look at this as both of these projects. I know we're trying to just look at this piece, but that's not the, that's not the true story here. And so it really is a 40B state monitor project in this case.
Well, let me, okay, I think I got it. And if I don't, come back. Yeah. Let me describe Article 2, because that is, that's the site-specific stuff. Article 1 is improving our zoning, our EA zoning, so that we can provide an alternative to 40B. Right now, 40Bs can go anywhere in town, and our EA, right now, is restricted. So Article 1 is just a general zoning improvement to our EA zoning bylaw. Article 2, though, is a specific project. It refers, it's requesting to rezone the property at 104 Coolidge. And it's just doing that. And then it's also requesting approval of the preliminary development plan that's been presented and is described in the warrant. So the preliminary development plan, in this case, is for a specific project that is a total of 67 units, seven of which are affordable. That, so that's describing 104 Coolidge. And it's called Meadowbrook Pond. It's, it's being presented to the town as an alternative to a 40B proposal that's called Coolidge Crossing, that is 88 units of three-bedroom for sale townhouses. So, that's what the article is about. Now, to Jean's point, though, a favorable vote, the town votes in favor by two-thirds, so it takes two-thirds. If the town votes in favor of approving the zoning of 104 Coolidge and approving the preliminary development plan, then that's what gets built, gets built there instead of the Coolidge Crossing. Because there's limited water and waste treatment capacity on site, then if the town votes against that, then the developer will build Coolidge Crossing, which is 88 units with three bedrooms. That eats up really almost all the water and waste treatment capacity. So that means that the apartments, if they get built, would be much smaller if they get built alone. So, I'm almost there to, I think I'm almost there to answer your question. But if the town votes in favor, then the preliminary development plan will enable 66 units of age-restricted housing on 104 Coolidge. That takes less water capacity, wastewater treatment capacity. That allows for the 40B project, which is called The Villages, it's 88 units of mixed one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. That project will then be able to build, to be built with, if the preliminary development plan is approved for the age-restricted. So age-restricted will enable the full apartment project to be built. So there's two things to that. Multiple things to that, but even so, it'll still use less water and waste capacity than the Coolidge Crossing project, the three-bedroom project.
Okay, so it's either 88 units or 155 units. And so it's hard to get to the 155 units is less impact on the schools, less impact on the water, less impact on the town. It's more than, you're increasing the town by 10 and 1/2% in one, in a minute.
It's, it's, it's actually, you've got to look at it by bedrooms, because that's what, you look at it by bedrooms and what those bedrooms are permitted for. Over 55 uses less water. So, over 55 uses less water. And the total number of bedrooms is actually less if we approve the over 55 and we get the full apartment project. It's actually, uses less, it uses less total water. So, it is...
John, it's also true, isn't it, that the 40B, which is the alternative for 104 Coolidge, is a three-bedroom condo alternative, which is families, lots of bedrooms, lots of drawdown of water, also financially quite bad for the town. So that there are a whole list of reasons why it's really good for the town to have the EA, including much less dense. EA is four units per acre. But there's another part of it. The alternative is good in and of itself, EA. And then the planned rental project has multiple virtues. It's not only warrant, and it's not before town meeting, but it has the virtues of having one- and two-bedroom apartments, and some three, but not that many. Therefore, fewer families with children, which is good financially for the town. It also has the virtue of, that project, which we are not considering, but which is on your mind, of having, counting all units, whether they're affordable or market, towards our 10%. You were concerned about whether we were going to get control. It's by having the rental units that we get very close, if not two, to control. I haven't got the numbers exactly, and someone here probably does. So, what was figured here was not, oh, everything here is wonderful. What was figured here by the planning board and the Housing Partnership and all the people who care about this is, this particular combination of projects, the EA before town meeting and the potential 40B down the street are together are the best the town can do out of this situation. And we think it's really very good indeed.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Julia Kendel, I'm at 6 Millbrook Road in Sherwin. And I'm worried about contamination of my wells. And I presume that you are sure, since you're promoting this project, that our wells won't be contaminated? And would you guys put that in writing, that you're responsible, if our wells do get contaminated by this project?
I don't think anybody can guarantee anything, any more than...
So you're taking into account something for the town, which you might contaminate every well on Meadowbrook Road. That's okay? You won't guarantee?
No.
No, 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 no.
Just to clarify, there's a certain amount of capacity that's been designed as waste treatment. And it's the, developers intend to build out two properties they control to make use of that capacity. So, one option is the over 55 project and some number of units of rental buildings, or a large townhouse project, and who knows what will happen on that other property. But that, the amount of effluent going into the ground is going to be approximately the same, no matter what our votes are. Next, what's that, correct?
The question was that people are feeling they need some level of guarantee that if they do have contamination or impact on their wells, there will be some action. And there's been conversation about that.
Could you clarify what you're trying to...
Marion, what the conversation was?
There's no place to put a well if our wells get contaminated. It's not like moving up on it, some other place on that property.
No, but this is a concern. You're right to bring it up, I'm glad you did. I'm sure the abutters are all concerned about this. And we understand, it's reasonable to be. So, the planning board has discussed this with the developer who's here and can fill in more than what I can say tonight. And he has agreed in writing that, first of all, any well test that is done before this is built will be moving much more water than these developments could ever use. I believe they pump up for three solid days, five days, 24 hours a day. And with your permission, and we hope that everyone, all the abutters will give permission, your wells are monitored during that time. And if there's an impact, then that's where we need to know about it. The option then is that, one option would be that the developer's wells become your water supply as well. Or if you develop a problem with your well that you can attribute to the new development, in the first three years after the whole thing is built, the developer who's here tonight, he can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah, let me, I mean, in the discussion, we looked at where the wells are, which, yeah. The wells are over there, sort of in the southeastern corner of the 84 Coolidge parcel. Meadowbrook is over at the top of the screen there. And the pump test, we talked about the possible influence of those wells. There's a, there's a state-mandated, it's called Zone 1, there's a state-mandated distance. And there's some abutters that, the two abutters on Rockwood and the abutter on 86 Coolidge have been offered. If they allow their wells to be monitored during the task, then if there was any influence or any problem, then they would be allowed to attach to the public water system. If there was no other remedy, then they could attach to the public water system if they had a problem with their wells. One of the abutters has already had a problem unrelated to any of these wells. It just had a...
At whose cost?
For a well. They'd be able to attach to, I don't know what the cost would be.
No, but who covers the cost, who pays for that?
They would attach, and pay, I presume, at the same rate as the people that live in the project.
But the actual cost of construction, of having to have your house plumbed so that it connects to that, who covers that cost? Not the cost of the utility, I mean, the cost of...
We agree to do that.
Okay.
Okay. The developer will cover the connection.
The three houses on it.
And what if the developer goes bankrupt or something, or closes his project, then who will do that?
Well, there's a covenant that's placed on the infrastructure cost, so there's a big incentive to, not go bankrupt, but there's a big incentive to, there's incentive to make the project successful.
If I could, I think her concern was more related to, correct me if I'm wrong, the potential septic influence on the wells versus the, called a hijacking of water from the well field, if you will. The septic system, obviously, you're in, I don't want to cause alarm, but you're way more in danger from your neighbor's septic or your own septic, because you're basically a wanted lot, where your wells wouldn't qualify under current water health regulations for separation. So, but because...
I'm the wanted lot, by the way.
...you would over-a-monitor, control wastewater treatment, because what has to be done? You cannot get the system off and activated until it is bonded with the state. So if I were to go bankrupt, there has to be a half a million dollar bond to replace any functional, there's a wastewater treatment system that comes in and a package plant that's about, it sits in that building up in the front, on the right side project, that has to be monitored by a professional company, the same tech group that we do at New School or any of these systems, it's quite real, and it's not, it's not new technology. But the influence from that wastewater field to Meadow Brook is not...
So can I make a comment? John, the people are trying kind of this to sound...
I didn't know where that sounded like.
I'm going all over.
Charge.
Charge.
So as Marion said, we are concerned, we're all concerned in Sherburne in general about our water. It's kind of the value on our house, and we do take it seriously, and it is something that we've all discussed throughout this whole process, regardless of any development in town, the water is a concern. That being said, the water and impacts of the E A will be less than an eighty-eight townhouse development on One Oh Four Coolidge. Also, through this process, the town, if the town chooses to support E A, it doesn't mean that then the next month, construction starts, then there's a whole nother secondary process of review. Groundwater analysis does get done, there is engineering studies that are reviewed, there's, it's not, the vote is not the end of the story. There is further research and it's, you know, yes, there's things we don't know, we are not ever going to know everything, as we've learned through the last couple of years of kind of really trying to get a sense of how do we learn where water travels, and how does it travel, and does it follow the topography and fissures in our bedrock. So there's a lot of things that we'll never know, but we, there will be a review process that will do the best to anyone's ability to ensure as much as possible that things are safe. I mean, there's risk in everything, and, but we do take it seriously, so.
Yeah, I think, just to amplify that, I guess the difference between the E A project is that it goes through all, as Eddie May said, it goes through all the Sherburne permitting process, the boards and committees and departments for development. It goes through all the standard, in the, after the town votes approval, if the town votes approval of the plan, then it goes through the final development process, through all the standard Sherburne rules and regulations, boards and committees and departments. If it's not approved, then the forty-B process does not do that. It goes through just the zoning board, and it has to adhere to the state standards, not Sherburne's rules. So there's a lot more scrutiny with the E A project, which is what the article said. And you were next.
Sure. Peter McStrachan, Twenty-One Meadow Brook Road. So I think I understand, One Oh Four Coolidge is Coolidge Corner today, could become Meadow Brook, whatever, and a sixty-seven unit versus eighty-eight. But I'm still unclear about part two, which is, in either scenario, what's happening at eighty-four Coolidge? So if it remains Coolidge Corner, and obviously Ben can speak for himself, but if it remains eighty-four, sorry, if it remains Coolidge Corner, what happens to the property at eighty-four Coolidge? If it becomes Meadow Brook, whatever, what happens to those units? Because either way, there's going to be a forty-B development, it's just whether it's going to be at One Oh Four Coolidge, or is it going to be at eighty-four Coolidge? Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, you're correct in saying that. There's a big difference, though.
Okay.
And I think that's what we ought to, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, and I guess part of also is, I'm unclear what impact either article has on that second property, the eighty-four Coolidge property. Is it bundled in with what we're agreeing to on One Oh Four, or is it completely separate?
It's, the only thing the town is voting on is the zoning of One Oh Four Coolidge and the very specific preliminary development plan for One Oh Four Coolidge. That's the only thing the town's voting on. However, and this is where others have pointed it out, there is a connection here, there's a linkage, there's an effect. The Coolidge Crossing forty-B alternative is projected to have about a hundred students. It's family-style, three-bedroom, eighty-eight units. The E A project, if that is passed, that's projected to have no school-aged children, because it's age-restricted and typically that you don't get school-aged children. It's conceivable, but it typically you don't. The housing studies that forecast how many of what you get suggest that it's a reasonable chance we'll get no school-aged children there. However, now, and this is to your point, if the E A passes, the, then eighty-four Coolidge as a forty-B can be developed, which will have apartments, and that's projected to have about nineteen students. So it'll have far fewer students, nineteen versus over a hundred. So there is, there is an impact. The financial revenue for the town, the tax revenue, things like that, make, the tax revenue, when you compare the cost of the schoolchildren and the burden on the schools, there's a big difference. So the net revenue is much greater for the E A project with the apartments. The number of school-aged children is much greater with the forty-B project. There's other, there's other aspects to it. Sorry.
Yeah, hi. Paul Mokiki, Forty-One Oh Four. I want to ask a couple of questions about the E A project. First, I guess I want to mention, after I ask the questions, I'll see your reaction. I've heard numbers for the E A project in terms of selling, and I'm not sure exactly what they are, which you're anticipating, six, seven hundred thousand dollars. One, I'm just concerned that there's not really great appetite for people paying that much money in Sherburne for E A housing, based on, I mean, the Abbey, seems like a very nice property, I don't think it's selling like hotcakes, and Sherburne Meadows up in Coolidge. I know a property just went on for sale for like three twenty-five, and I think the price is about half of what they originally asked for, and I'm sure people know more about that. I do. So I'm a little skeptical that people are going to be spending, you know, getting sixty, seventy apartments at six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars, that'd be nice, but I don't know if I can point anywhere, but I'll come to that. But my two questions are, how are these two projects interrelated? And can the developer just sort of stop saying, I don't want to put elderly housing on this second project, because I can't sell it, and I'm just going to put a regular forty-B? What's the incentive for the developer to focus on this elderly housing project and put elderly housing, and can they switch it halfway if it's not working?
Maybe we should let the developers be...
Well, there's two parts to it, but go ahead, Ben.
You can use your pointer for a second.
Yes, please. You should move up to the...
Well, there's no microphone.
No mic, yeah.
Your microphone, if you can hear.
I'll, I have more numbers, but I hope not to, but to try to answer the...
Ten inches from the mic, please.
Move it away.
Just to talk, to go back to the connection between the two, and the lack of connection or the potential of connection, let me back up a little bit. Right now, this wastewater treatment area was where we started the testing. We have done, we've already filed with the state, we've started our groundwater analysis. And we feel we have the capacity of somewhere around twenty-six thousand to twenty-eight thousand gallons in this general area. That is what this project, which is around ten thousand gallons of septic capacity, and this project, which is around thirteen thousand gallons of septic capacity, can be handled in this point. If this became a larger project and was eighty-eight units of three-bedroom, that's two hundred and forty-nine, two hundred and fifty, seventy bedrooms. So it's somewhere in the thirty thousand gallons of septic capacity. We elected that if this, these two projects came together, with this being permitted as E A, this staying as a rental, we'd be comfortable with this location and this location alone. Does that mean we can get thirty-five thousand gallons? Sure. We would have to leave this location for twenty-five thousand gallons, and then this is our alternate location for another ten or fifteen thousand gallons, because the soils are very good right here. So we could split the system up. Economically, this project, to me, at sixty-seven units of fifty-five or older housing, is, although the same economic return, is way less painful, long-term, state-regulated, profit-adjusted, monitoring. It's just a different type of project. It won't be well-received. It hasn't been well-received. It won't be received well by the zoning board, it won't be received by the various boards in town. So we introduced this project as a better alternative for this location. Doesn't, so that's its own standalone. Instead of just doing a ten thousand gallon conventional septic system here, which would be permitted at the local board of health, we elected to do a wastewater treatment system, which was twenty-five to thirty-five thousand gallons, and start the permitting process for that. So, to kind of get back to your question, if this is approved, then we will proceed with this project as laid out. We will have to come before the planning board to talk about more specifics. That's when we start doing our groundwater analysis, we look at drainage areas, we talk about well-inimpacts, we go in front of the conservation board, we talk about groundwater flows from drainage areas, we talk about groundwater flows from roadways, so on and so forth. This septic permit will percolate along at the state. They don't really care what this is, they don't care what this is, they're basically caring, what is the gallonage you're getting permitted? This is where our proposed well field is. We did two or three wells already, we determined that we have the capacity to get thirty thousand gallons out of this zone, but it would be challenging, it might mean eight to nine to ten wells. So we appreciated the opportunity to do only around twenty-six thousand gallons, which these two projects gave us, which also reduces what I need to generate out of this well field. So to answer your question, yes, vote, this comes to the planning board as a planning board-reviewed project, this comes to the zoning board as a zoning board-reviewed project, a lot of commingled roadways, access, traffic studies, drainage reports. So there'll be a centralized review by a third-party engineer that I will be paying for, for both projects, but they'll be sort of reviewing the drainage on both, the traffic patterns on both, site lines, access, so on and so forth. One will just happen to be at the planning board, and one will be at the zoning board. If this is denied, we will, this is already in Housing Appeals Court, so the eighty-eight units, it's already permitted here. So if this is denied, then presumably, if it comes out of Housing Appeals Court as a positive vote in my direction, then I would have the opportunity to leave this alone as eighty-eight units of three-bedroom, potentially reduce the number of units, which I don't think I would do, leave this as eighty-eight, and also do this project at eighty-eight units, but I would have to go find another ten or fifteen thousand gallons of capacity. So it's not like this precludes that, or that precludes this. It's just, this has already been filed, designed, engineered, we prefer the sixty-seven units of fifty-five or older housing, however, we would have no problem doing the eighty-eight units of three-bedroom townhomes. We just know we're going to get a lot more cooperation from the boards with a smaller septic impact, a smaller well impact, a potential solution for the housing, no affordable housing, and a revenue generator with no kids. So that's why we propose these two projects. My guess is, if this is denied, it will take some time, but there will be an eighty-eight unit project here, and there will be an eighty-eight unit project here.
So if you start on the left with age-restricted, but it's not selling, you can just switch?
No. Once it starts as a, once it's been rezoned, and I've basically come forward with a fifty-five or older project, it would take, there's no underlying zoning available in your code to redraft this as something other than a fifty-five or older. I mean, potentially, I could come back in in a year and say, I have sixty-seven units, I want to go, I want to leave them as fifty-five or older, but do twenty-five percent affordable. I would have to scrap the project, refile it at the state, back to its eighty-eight unit project. I can't, I can't change it under your current zoning without town approval to do such. So it's not a, gee, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, I want to sell them as, to families now, I can't do that. You folks would have to vote to allow me to do that. And I don't think the planning board could even do it. It would have to go back to town meeting for a vote. And it would, it would be a very strange animal, because it would, there's no category for it to fall into in your zoning vote, because it wouldn't fall into your E A zoning anymore.
So what are you planning on, what's your idea of selling these, or how much?
We are going to react to the market. We feel there's no issues in the six to seven hundred range. If we need to be in the five and a quarter to six and a quarter, not a problem, we'll make adjustments to the houses before we start. We do, we've built three hundred houses half a mile away, we're going to have a townhouse project three-quarters of a mile away in Natick, and I know that I can sell a two-thousand square foot townhouse in Natick to someone fifty-five or older for seven hundred thousand I don't think I can get as much, because this is a new animal in Sherburne, but because of its location, because of its convenience, because of its proximity, we, I don't know if anyone drives on the Mass Pike, but those units on the Mass Pike are fifty-five or older, they're two thousand square foot units, and they're selling six fifty to seven fifty, and the Pike is blaring down your back door. It happens to be in Framingham, which is not as cachet a town, obviously, better convenient, but there's a huge pent-up demand for this type of product. It's a little different than Abbey Road in that they're bigger, they're singles and they're duplexes, so it's not a tight community, it's not a, what I would call, an infill community like Abbey was. Abbey served a different market, so to speak, more of a center-of-town market, but we're not going for a... But we're not going for eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. And if we have to adjust our product amenities to the current market a year and a half from now, we'll do it. It's, it's not like it won't be successful.
Excellent, the explanation. Do you guys feel that's reasonable and gives a market and this is really going to happen? Or this is not going to happen, it's going to run up in the heat?
No, we recommend Article Two because this is consistent with what we've heard before. It's consistent with what was presented at the, at the planning board hearing.
I heard something in Dover, I don't know who built it or whatever, that it started off with age restricted and went to, you know, just forty B. I don't think that's what happened.
No, it was always, there's two projects in Dover. They were always forty Bs. They were both forty Bs. They were age restricted forty Bs. In both cases, the original developer went bankrupt and was taken over by another developer. And the ZBA, because it was a forty B under the jurisdiction of the ZBA, the ZBA could vote on its own to remove the restriction. But that's not the case here. This is a different situation.
Yeah, that's right. That was another question that others have asked the same, Paul, the same question. And the, and the answer is, as Gino said, in Dover, they were always forty Bs.
Melissa McStrahan, twenty-one Metta Book. So just, I think it's been brought up a bunch of times, but I just want to clarify again. It's sixty-seven plus eighty-eight or eighty-eight.
Plus eighty-eight.
Plus eighty-eight. So when are your plans finalized for eighty-four Coolidge? When are you looking to? And what will be our opportunities as citizens on that?
This, this project has been filed with Mass Housing for a site eligibility letter. We were waiting for this vote before we take the next steps with this project. It needs to get a site approval letter from, it's actually Mass Housing Finance Agency. Presumably that happens January, February, or March. So this project and this project will almost be, they'll be simultaneous. One will be at the zoning board in May, June, and one would be here at the planning board in the same timeframe. Because basically, we have to get the infrastructure worked out collectively. It doesn't do any good to sort of bifurcate the thing and try to permit drainage on one side and drainage over here. We're going to want to have one consulting firm review it all. So they're both becoming, should be simultaneous.
You made a distinction there because in the planning board notes that I read, it said, if we went forward with the sixty-seven, the eighty-eight at one oh four Coolidge, or sorry, excuse me, eighty-four Coolidge are more or less guaranteed. But then if we went forward with the eighty-eight forty B units, that you would likely abandon the apartment building. So I was under the impression from those notes that it was, we're either getting a hundred and fifty-five in Coolidge, eighty-eight forty B, or we're getting eighty-eight forty B.
It comes down to that septic question. Physically, financially and physically, acreage-wise and so forth, both projects can happen. When we sort of realized we didn't have thirty-five to forty thousand gallon capacity here, and we were having quite a few conversations with both the Housing Partnership and the, and the planning board, that's when this plan was developed. Right now, if this, like I said, if this is denied, then there's a bunch of options. This doesn't have to be a rental, which I know no one on the planning board or Housing Partnership wants to hear, but there's a high demand for, look at what Pulte just did at South Natick. You turn this into a flat-style building, they're selling for three to four hundred thousand dollars. It's not what I would, would do, and it's not what my negotiations with any of the boards have come up with. But that's another alternative, whether it's the same septic capacity, but there's, you don't generate all the rentals out of it. So I'm pretty much realized that after talking with the selectman, the planning board, and the zoning board, there is no way I'm going to get permission for this project, even though it's a state-permitted project, and this project unless I'm working cohesively on both in the direction that we've sort of been negotiating for the last twelve months on, on the collective project. So that's, that's the direction.
So it is one fifty-five or eighty-eight? I know I keep hammering from that point, but that's.
It's either one fifty-five.
For, right?
Or somewhere, it'll be more than eighty-eight.
Okay, you'll make it bigger than eighty-eight.
Or this will stay at eighty-eight and I'll do something here.
Okay, something small.
But I don't think it's going to be that many less units. I'll have to decide whether it's financially worth it for me to go find another fifteen thousand gallons of septic capacity, which, like I said, would be here.
And then the, my, the latter part of my question was, what are we as citizens, you know, what's our, what's our involvement in that process for that apartment? Because there is an impact on the schools, there's an impact on traffic, there's an impact on all kinds of things. I know there was mention earlier, someone said, moving things to the periphery of town. We still feel like we're citizens of the town, so we want to have a say. We don't really, you know, periphery isn't really a comfortable feeling when I pay the same price as anyone else pays. So can you comment on that?
Yeah, there's several things. The EA project is, goes through the, goes through the full Sherburne system.
Yep.
And you know that. The, the, the villages, the apartment project goes through the ZBA. There's ZBA hearings. We've, we've got experience as a community with other forty B projects. There's opportunity for, for, you know, Mass Housing says write a letter anytime. There's opportunity to, to participate at the zoning board hearings. But the planning board, Board of Health, Conservation, everybody else goes through the zoning board. If the EA project does not, they have to go to each, each group. So that's the short answer. I think you already knew that. That, that we're working cooperatively means we've already gotten responses. Folks at, on, on your neighbors have said they really didn't want to see construction traffic. So the developer, Trask has already said they won't use, they looked at it and said, okay, they won't use Meadowbrook for construction access.
And is that committed to as of today?
Actually.
Significant amount of traffic over the summer, so I just want to make sure. When does that start for that? The commitment tonight?
With the project. Yeah, there's no, there should be no activity there from any of my team until this project starts.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
That's a good question. It's the, the developer wrote a letter to the planning board, which is on our town website, and it's with the preliminary development plan. So it's a, it's a commitment with the preliminary development plan also to make the emergen, make it emergency access and gated, subject to what fire and police require. And the same thing with the connection was another concern about using it as a bypass, going through the eighty-four Coolidge site. So without a cooperative relationship, we really can't, we, the planning board, don't have any authority to, to ask for that commitment to make the connection between the two projects emergency access only. But, but that's in the letter in a cooperative way. That's also in the letter, saying that also would be gated, subject to what fire and police require, but limited to emergency access. So those are examples, I think. Yes, I don't know who was first. Paul?
Along the way, I've heard there was discussions about trying to get water from Natick. Is that off the table?
Melissa, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Along the way, I've heard discussions about trying to get public water from Natick. Is that off the table?
No, I, I, it, I know the selectmen wrote a letter. They got some response that was, that was negative. But I don't, I, as far as I understand, it's not a done deal in either case. Doesn't sound like the selectmen in Natick have, have, I don't, convened or whatever.
I'm just asking the status.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Peter again from Metta Book Road. Did I hear correctly that as drawn right now, there would be an increase of only nineteen students? Is that right? In, in this plan?
Yeah, the, the, because the EA is not forecasted to have children.
Right.
It's not.
The nineteen would come from the rental.
The nineteen would come from the, the mix of single bedroom, two-bedroom, and some three-bedroom.
Okay.
Yep. Mike?
We, we need to really emphasize that these are forecasts. We don't have really relevant data from towns like Sudbury or Holliston or Hawkington over the impact of similar developments. I think nationally, yeah, there's some guidelines. I'd like to see data.
Yeah.
Particularly Hawkington and Sudbury on the impact of some of these projects. But, you know, with Natick, they've got averages around half the students for two or three bedroom units. But our, our, our schools are better. So we just don't know.
Yeah, so.
And I think, so I just want everyone to realize, these are rough aspects. It could be a lot worse, or it may not be. It could maybe be a, a mecca for seniors to replace the retired, sell our ranch.
We did, we did have more discussion about it. Matthew, if you could respond and, and see another question.
Um, the numbers we pulled for the estimates for the number of students were actually for a study performed by a company called RKG Associates for a project in the town of Sudbury for a similar rental-style project. That's where we got the total for zero students in the fifty-five-plus development and the total of nineteen students in the rental and the one hundred and six students in the eighty-eight forty B project. That was based solely off of bedroom count. It was around one point four students in a three-bedroom unit, around point six students in a two-bedroom unit, and point oh three in a one-bedroom unit. So that's where we got those numbers, just to give you a little bit more of a understanding of what towns those were pulled from. It was pulled from Hawkington and a bunch of other middlesex towns.
Is that a study you can share?
Yes, it's actually, we have a website, metabroccommons.org. It has all this information as well as all the studies we've quoted. Yes, it's online.
Is the study based on projections? Or is the study built that this Sudbury or Hawkington units have already been built? They've been, with their tenure, tenured to students or what?
The study was a forecast done for an Avalon Bay rental community. And it was based on other rental projects in surrounding towns and their, I guess, history with students in their rental developments and rental units.
And so that, that is available online. Yes.
I was going to say, you said it was a forecast, but it was based on actual data.
It was based on actual data, but it was forecasting what that, or predicting what that project, that specific Avalon Bay project in Sudbury would have.
Is there data available for actual, you know, similar towns, top school system in the state, second school system in the state? What impact is of apartment building of, for a hundred and fifty-five, however many bedrooms? I think one has two hundred and sixty-four bedrooms, one has two hundred and seventy-four bedrooms, whatever the configuration is. But are there any actual, that list in your studies for, as in, one actual student sample?
That study was based on other, the, the forecast, let me, let me take a step back. The projections were based on actual students, actual numbers in developments in Hawkington and Sudbury. That's, I think I'm, think I'm answering your question, but those numbers were based, you know, Lincoln Sudbury is, it's not number one, but it's also a great school. And those numbers that have been pulled by RKG Associates, I'm not sure of all of their, you know, their exact method. They do list out their method in their study. It's a lengthy study. I suggest you read it. I don't have all the information. But I know that that, the projection was based on historical data from similar developments to that development in Sudbury.
Yes.
Aaron Paddock, eighty-six Coolidge Street. I just want to move back to the, to the septic sewage treatment plant. What will it look like? Can you give us an understanding of how tall the buildings will be, the retaining walls, what the screening will look like for the plant?
The, this is the building itself and.
Are the dimensions on that map?
So we've got about a, this essentially will be a single level, probably, we'll do some architectural on it. So it'll probably look like a barn, is what it's going to look like. Style to be determined. Doesn't need a lot of windows. Doesn't, doesn't have vent pipes or anything that, you know, like you'd see on Mass Pike or something like that. About thirty-five to forty feet square building, so sixteen hundred to two thousand square feet total, single level slab. This is going to be essentially a flat field. So the field that's there now will be a field, probably five feet higher than it is now. There'll be a retaining wall along the property line here to gain that five, five feet. But for the most part, this will look like a flat field. Screening is really subject to discussions with you and with the zoning board when we get into it. But the, the best screening would be down at this location. You're really not going to see much other than a field. But this is where we do the most screening because there isn't a lot of vision, obviously, back through here with the woods being on this side and the hill being here, all wooded, so.
So a field but five feet higher than it is now?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry. It's monitored by the state and I believe you said rigorous testing. When, when a system fails or when maintenance is required, who covers that cost? Is that Trask who does that? Is it either the property owners, the development owners, or is it the city that does that?
There's, there's a couple, and I'm still a little new at this on the ownership structure. But basically, every, this project and this project have to be, the way this will work, if you live here or you live here or you are the landlord here, the water system is a publicly monitored water system. There will be actual meters on all these units. There'll be meters on the building itself. And the landlord and these condo association folks will pay, most likely to a third-party operator who manages the project, who collects the fees for the water. We can charge a sewer fee as well. So we can do, we can mirror a Natick fee and say, we're going to get, you know, X for water and three times X for, for sewer usage. So everyone is careful about their usage. We will do sub-meters for the tenants. We did that in our other project in Ashland where we pay the, the master bill and the tenants pay us back through a sub-metering company. And then either we'll, this can, there are entities that own these across the country because they're like utilities, they're municipalities. They just collect money, hire companies. I have to, before it goes into function, I have to create a bond, a cash bond or a performance bond for what the state feels is reasonable, if there's an equipment failure, if there is a line failure. Obviously, from here over, the condo association would own all of their infrastructure. So if a line broke or somebody was digging something up and hit something, the condo association would have to pay for its piping. And this building would have to pay for its piping. But this could either be owned by the entity that owns this because it's another revenue generator. It could be owned by me if I didn't keep this after I built it. Or it could be sold to companies if that's all they do.
Aaron?
Maybe it was online and I missed it, but is, is it possible that a copy of the traffic study that was done?
Yes, we actually had a traffic study, but we just, did I go on yet, the new one?
Not yet, it's still a draft.
Monday, we got a new study, which basically confirmed what we had, but broke it down per project and has, shows both locations.
It'll be on the Metta Book?
Yeah, we'll get that on tomorrow. We'll send it to you as well. But it basically, the, the sightlines are great. So the sightline, the safety is not an issue. We don't change the level of service at Spine Street. And we don't change the level of service, even with both projects fully built out, of the level of service of Coolidge and South Main Street. And we don't have any sightline issues. We have to be careful of our own property line here. That we can't screen our vision for the left-hand, the left and right-hand turns out of this location. But we control it. So we can, we can make sure that our plantings are set up properly to not affect that. And there's no issue here. We have over four hundred feet at both locations. We only need about two seventy is the standard for, for the type of traffic and the speed of Coolidge.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one more.
Yeah.
How much tree cutting, clear-cutting, clearance do you think will need to be done to accommodate both of these projects if they proceed as, you know, two?
Very little on this piece. The wood line right now is, I think it's shown. Yeah. There's a little squilly line on here showing the wood line. This is already cleared where the power lines are. This is the field. And the wood line comes just below the well and up into here, like that. That's the wood line. So this is heavily tree. This is the open field right now. There's some trees around my existing house, but nothing through here would need to be pulled. All the trees that you see here, I think, are on your property over here. This is a little. Um, this is a little bit different right now. This is a field, and this lower section is a field, someone's using it as a dirt trap, motor cross track, uh, but for the most part, this is wooded, so we're gonna try to not touch anything in the green zones, except where we need to put some infrastructure. Um, but there will be some cutting to get these units in, but there isn't a lot of cutting and filling of the land. Um, there's not a... This is the rise there of the hill now. That property has, it kind of rises up here and then goes back down that way, so we're trying to leave the top of the hill alone and work the units around it this way. And there wouldn't be any cutting. This is wooded, this sixty-foot buffer is, is fairly wooded here and all the way around, not as much down through here, not as many trees down through here.
Yes?
Um, have you done any studies on how much the water can be raised? Um, as far as Metta Brook, Honk goes, there was three houses put in on the Natick side a hundred years ago, and it, um, it increased, uh, took away about two feet of the bank all the way around. Just, I mean, what, it seems like it's gonna be, what?
Well, under, um, under stormwater management, I'm not sure how they, about that, I know, I'm familiar with the project, it's right over here. Um, but under stormwater management regulations, we cannot increase the flow of water off-site. Right now, this site is draining either to this wetland and underneath the aqueduct or down, there's a catch basin right here that goes into that drain easement, which runs over under Meadowbrook out onto Course Brook. Um, and, and so we're basically gonna be sending water where it is before, here and here. Um, a lot of this water runs into this wetland, which drains this way out to a large wetland on the backside of the farm. Um, this wetland does the same thing, it sort of meanders over here, and there's another massive wetland system here. But we're not allowed to increase the, um, water leaving the project, and we have to control what, the, the rate at which it enters the water table. So we have to have detention basins, um, to control runoff, um, to meet state standards, so we, believe it or not, on a, on a thirty, almost a forty-acre parcel, this is, this is not an extensive development. Um, we're not clearing, you know, we're not, this is fifty percent open space, and we're probably looking more like seventy percent open space on this project, because we're leaving the hill alone, and this whole wetland area is untouched. So it's, um, we're not allowed to increase it anyhow.
Also, we, I think we're concerned about groundwater as much as stormwater. Part of the study of designing the wastewater treatment plant is a modeling analysis that analyzes what the impact would be on groundwater, whether it raises the water table, and if it does, how to mitigate that.
I just have one question, John Thompson there. Uh, the catch basin on the left, uh, John, could you show me where, where's your well in connection with that?
This one?
Yes.
These are our wells right here.
Thirty feet away?
I think he's asking about another one.
My well's right here.
It's right next to it, it's about twenty feet.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the, the water that's running off here now is coming from trees and sand, and it's purified. The water that's gonna be ended up there is gonna come off of parking for three hundred and fifty cars, and that's, that's oil, gas, chemicals that make up. That's all gonna flow down to that catch basin.
Well, actually, it can't, under the DEP regulations, we have to treat it first.
Yeah, I, the DEP regulation?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, you can't, um, any point source pollutant paving, um, roadways paving has to be put into, one, it has to have various cleaning mechanisms, i.e. catch basins for initial sand and leaves, and then they have these things, storm scepters, which are chamber tanks that the water flows to before it goes into detention basin. Um, and the detention basin is ideally trying to percolate it back into the ground, except in the extreme storms, when the, the basin is designed to sort of reach a tipping point where, where it would overflow into the outlet pipe here or wherever it may be. But it's all fairly, fairly regulated and substantially more regulated. I mean, right now, Coolidge Street has no drainage, um, and if there's a catch basin, I think there's a catch basin here that just dumps directly into the wetland. That, that doesn't happen today. That has to be brought back in and treated before it can be put into a wetland system.
So you're saying that the catch basin here, right here, is real close to my well?
Yeah.
The, the water going, draining in the ground, not that, no?
Well, that's, no, I, I'm not a hydrologist, but this is a closed system. The catch basin is like, considered a closed system. Um, the water goes in it, it goes into the catch basin, the leaves are supposed to settle out to the bottom, the water rises, it hits an outlet pipe, there's a pipe that goes underneath, it's right in here, I think, it goes underneath, and then that's what this drain easement, somebody has the drain easement on their property right there, and there's a pipe in the ground that goes all the way out to Meadowbrook, goes under Meadowbrook, and then heads sort of due north towards Natick into that, that wetland over there on Course Brook. Um, right now, that's just sort of handling whatever's getting caught. The aqueduct created a barrier, so basically, when they put the aqueduct in, they had, they had to deal with whatever's running off the property, catch it, put it in a pipe, and drop it over into the wetland. So that was their answer a hundred and fifty years ago, or whenever the aqueduct went in. Um, it is how our drainage leaves the site, so all, a wetland, a pipe, a wetland here, a wetland here, are all, um, dispersion tools, if you will, in that they receive the natural water flow of the project now, and that's where you need to continue to put any excess water flow that you have, however, we have to treat it first. Um, so it has to be through a recharge system or a stor, or a storm scepter system, and that's a closed system, so unless there's a break in it or somebody messed up, that should, that should not affect your well at all.
And what happens if there is a break?
Well, that's owned by the state, so if there's a break there, um, that should be reported to the state right away, and you'd know it, because if there was a problem there, it'd be flooding up around the aqueduct, because I've watched the water kind of come down along the aqueduct, and, and sometimes that's, and we actually, uh, one of the other conditions that, um, the Planning Board asked us to include was that if we're allowed to, we will maintain this structure, so it doesn't get filled and blocked with leaves. We'll have to get the state permission, but if we can do a, we have to do what's called an operation and maintenance for our drainage, so we can, if we're allowed to, we're gonna add that into our regular cleaning.
Is there any... Is there any...
No, that's just wa, that's just rainwater, so, no, no septic.
Any other questions? Um, our target was to last an hour, we've gone almost an hour and a half, so we're, we've done well. Um, if you have any other questions, um, if you think of them later, uh, please, please send them, and we'll, we'll respond. Um, and, and I hope you all come to, to, uh, the special town meeting. I'll, I'll say it again for everybody, that it's, uh, December sixth at seven PM at Pine Hill School. Um, your que, your being here and these questions have been really, uh, great. They've been very helpful to, to, to us and very helpful, I think, to everybody, so I, I really commend everybody who came. Thank you very much.